But the city of Grafton pledged twenty thousand dollars to the Memorial Day Committee. And the Memorial Day Committee in kind, at our following meeting, spoke about going to the county commission meeting. And we said that after funding that was asked for was secured, that we would then take these additional funds and put them in a state table, where they're not going to be in the general funds, where this is going to be kind of a rainy day account, that we can guarantee the future of this if we lose the funding. We're very nervous, commission. We really are. It sounds like a lot of money, but like I said, it keeps going down and down. So normally I come in here this time of year and I say, whatever you guys would pledge to us, we would graciously take and be appreciative. By no means are we expecting anything more than you've given in the past. But I would ask if the commission would consider matching the city's donation. And if not, any donation would be greatly appreciated.
Kind of add to Scott's numbers. A lot of folks don't realize and understand, our standpoint is, and I'm sure pretty much everybody in this town, is that it should be an honor to be in this parade. Most of you go to other parades, most of the acts and things that you see, acts, the participants, I should say, they pay to be in those parades. There's a fee to come to the parade, so forth. It's the complete opposite here. Pretty much everything that goes down the street on Memorial Day, the committee has paid for. The bands, the high school bands that go down the street, you're talking roughly fifteen hundred dollars per band. So when you're looking at those numbers, those numbers drop quickly. Last night at committee, it was brought up that some individuals had approached us about wanting to be in the parade. They're stiltsmen, guys that walk on the stilts. And there's two of them. They're coming in supposedly out of Akron, Ohio. But for them to be in our parade, they want twelve hundred dollars. We said, no, not issue.
Well, then give us the twelve.
Yeah, but this is what we're up against. And when Scott's talking about being nervous, and I'm sure commission is very well aware of price hikes all the way around. It's not going to get any cheaper for these folks to come in. Again, all of us down there have the mindset of, you should be proud and want to come here and be in this parade. But we also understand they're not going to do it unless somebody comes up with some funding for them to be here. And each year it gets more and more expensive. It just keeps going in that direction. And that's why, like Scott says, that's why we are nervous. And I'm just putting, you know, one figure, that's just the high school bands. All the other stuff that you see going down through, there's charges involved with those also. To give you exact figures on those, I don't have those exact figures. But again, pretty much everything that's going down, there's a cost to the committee involved in that. So that's why we're kind of hoping that we can get this rainy day fund set together. But that way, if something would happen, we know that we have at least two years that we can put something down the street and give us two years to find additional funding from somewhere. That's where we're at right now.
You guys are nervous. You're making me nervous.
And I don't want to take everyone's time, but if I may add, just to give you an idea of price hikes. You know, pre-COVID, we were right around six thousand dollars and change for putting our program book out. It's pushing nine thousand dollars now. Those ads that people put in that book was a way for us to generate income. That gap is closing. What we're generating now is very close to what it cost for us just to put out that publication. And I think everybody in this room would agree that that publication wouldn't be what it was if we had a dollar price tag on front of it, a two-dollar price tag on front of it. People, and let's be honest with ourselves, people would be very upset if they felt that something that has went on for years and years and years now came with a price tag. So just wanted to add that in.
Let me ask a question. Some of these people that are participating in the other parades that they are paying to be in, are any of those in our parade?
I, yes. Two that I can give right off the top of my head, and I'm not picking on any, but using the Strawberry Festival as an example, because it's one of the ones that's close to upcoming. From my understanding, both Philip Barber Band and Grafton High School Band will be participating in the Strawberry Festival. Highlanders also will be participating in that. The bands I know, when they go, they have to pay a fee.
Entry fee.
An entry fee to be in the parade, okay? They still have their same costs, pay for the bus driver, the gasoline, and that routine to get from here to there. They pay that to participate in that parade. In their end, you know, that's again is involved with the fairs and festivals. The bands are judged, if they're judged best, they get a trophy. So basically, they're paying for their own trophy. Once you break all the numbers down, they're paying for their own trophy.
Do you know how much they pay to get in?
That I do not know.
It's, I, the bands and stuff I know, it's a relatively small amount. I'm going to say fifty, seventy-five dollars. Now, businesses to participate in these parades, just several hundred dollars. We know that our precedence was set years ago, where there were no entry fees in this. But I think if we all remember in this room, like Doug said earlier, and I'd like to reiterate, it used to be an honor to participate in this parade. It was a great honor. Whether we were schoolchildren marching through this parade, whether you decorated on a float for weeks or months, you know. You know, there wasn't a blade of grass out of place come Memorial Day weekend in this town. Times have changed, and we understand this. But, you know, the evil that we fight with this is our time of year. There's two things that kill us. A, bands and schools no longer want to participate, and I hate to use this word, but basically unless they're bribed to come, because they're in a position where we're at the end of the school year. Our seniors have already graduated. We can't put a band together. A lot of other people, acts. We've started some live bands. I think you've all seen them come through the parade. You know, they're like, hey, it's Memorial Day weekend. I could be somewhere else making money. Or it's a holiday. I don't want to ruin my plans to spend time in Grafton. It's, and to be honest with you, and we've got a great working relationship with them. I think that, me personally, and this is just an opinion, I think the biggest thing that has hurt the Memorial Day Parade over the years is the Strawberry Festival. Reason being is Strawberry Festival used to be after Memorial Day. Several years ago, that was moved back to before Memorial Day for the exact problems that we were facing. They couldn't get bands to participate. School was out. Everybody looks at the Strawberry Festival now, and we're hearing this from middle schools and high schools across the region and across the state, to be honest with you. That's their finale for the year.
It's their last hurrah. And again, I don't want to drop names, but a couple of years ago, just with what Scott's talking about, we reached out to the Morgantown High School Mohegan Band. At the time, was probably the largest, short of WVU University, the largest band that could march down the street anywhere. We contacted them. Their first response was, our uniforms have already been turned in. Our response was, put them in blue jeans and matching t-shirts. They came back with, well, my seniors have graduated and the incoming freshman class doesn't know the music. So, okay, half the number of kids are going to show up. Bring your sophomores and juniors, that are now juniors and seniors. And on, on, on. We even dangled the carrot. You know, we're going to offer you, like everybody else, fifteen hundred bucks to show up. They didn't work. I mean, we gave them every out that there was. We've got, you know, on the complaint side, we've had comments that the committee is so mean and nasty for making the kids wear those wool uniforms when it's so hot outside. We don't require that. We're asking you to come, participate, show your respect, you know, right on down the line. Say jeans and matching t-shirts. We don't care whether they match or not. What we're looking for is something to go down. And we just, like Scott's saying, because of our time, we're not fortunate enough to be able to, we can't change Memorial Day. We can't change the day that this takes place. We've bickered back and bickered, pickered back and forth, you know. The twenty-ninth, Memorial Day is the twenty-ninth this year. But Memorial Day is the third. And I mean, because of the holiday, let's make it three-day weekend. We go through this all the time. There's, I think, it's been a while back, but I can remember a Wednesday parade one year because it was the thirtieth. Not the twenty-ninth, not the twenty-eighth, it was the thirtieth. And it really threw a wrench in things, but, you know. People in this town, I have become known for saying, you know, Grafton's one of those jokes you've got to live here to understand. But when it comes to this parade, you do, you have to live here to understand why this parade is what it is for this town, this community, this county, and this state. And a lot of folks, outsiders, don't get that. They don't understand. They were not the ones that, through grade school, middle school, and high school, were in this parade, and what this parade means and what it's about. And said, we're nervous that we're not going to be able. Every year, people come back, guys did a wonderful job. It was great. It was better than last year. You keep going. We're getting to that point that it may not be able to be as good as what it was last year because we may not be able to get the participants in here to do it.
We talk about the committee. Scott's mentioned Doug mentioned. The committees all volunteer. The committee doesn't get anything out of this. These are people from the county, the city, and the vet organizations that come in to volunteer their time to keep this parade going. So that's something to keep in mind.
Very passionate, and if I can add to that, very passionate people. And none of us, and I say this, and I believe I talk for these two also, nobody on the committee wants to be recognized or be patted on the back. We, you know, this is something that is instilled in us from when we were younger and participated in this parade. This is something we're passionate about. And I believe I can speak for these two also in closing to say, as long as there's breath in our lungs, we will continue this in the best manner we can.
Scott, if I'm not mistaken, were the Grafton awarded the distinction of being the official Memorial Day Parade?
Mr. Chad Royce, I believe most of you know him. He's involved in a lot of youth sports. He's on our committee now. He's co-parade chairman. He's brought a lot to the table with Memorial Day Committee. But he was the cheerleader in that. And he got the Capitol to understand what we were doing and respect what we were doing. And we actually got to go down on the Capitol floor and be presented with being the official parade and observance for the state of West Virginia. So yes, when you see the banners and the flags and things that we put up, it's not just something we came up with. It's, we are representing the entire state now.
Side note on that, it's one of the very few times that Capitol unanimously voted that this parade was named the official West Virginia Memorial Day Parade. There's a lot of other little towns here and there that, I shouldn't say little towns, but a lot of other towns that put on parades. But we have the distinction of being able to say, one, that we are the longest continuous running parade in the nation, and we are the official parade of the state of West Virginia.
How many years running now?
This is one hundred and fifty-six. And this is the reason why, although it was very tough for community, businesses, patrons, participants, the year of COVID twenty twenty, when we suspended the official parade. But, you know, the committee members and the city worked really well with us, along with county officials, worked really well with us and allowed us to put on a small parade that year. But we made a pact, and we said, we didn't care if we went to jail. We were walking down the street that day and putting on a parade. Because at that point, it went on for one hundred and fifty-three years, and we weren't going to let it pass by.
Good for you.
That's a long time ago. I remember I was there.
But that shows you.
I had the first one though.
But that shows you the passion in the group. It really does. These are some of the greatest people that are really in my life. We can go down there and we can bicker and complain. And it's just like politics. We don't see eye to eye on things. But at the end of the day, we are all there for the same reason.
I think everybody appreciates all the hard work and effort you guys put into it every year. I mean, it's the same as it was when we were kids. I mean, it's, like I said, nobody understands it unless you are, unless you've lived it. And I don't think, speaking for myself, I don't think this commission is going to let the parade fail, especially when it comes to money.
I feel the same way.
I hope you guys feel the same as I do, but I think it's a very important thing that we do. Kicks off the summer too. I mean, that's when summer pretty much officially starts for this area. And that's our time here. We're a summertime place.
Yeah, COVID was tough for us too because I think, you know, set aside that, you know, we felt like we weren't paying the honor that we paid every year to the fallen below those little white markers. I mean, we also understand the impact that it had on local businesses and the economy in this town. I mean, this is a big weekend for this town. You know, a lot of small businesses are taking a big chunk of their yearly income during that weekend.
It's extremely busy that weekend.
I don't think we can take that out of order.
No, neither did the Senate.
They have requisitioned until the twenty-four, I believe.
Earl, do you think it'd be possible if we just pledged twenty thousand dollars to match the city?
There's a problem with it at all, but we can't use ARP money.
Right, we can't use ARP money. We can, yeah, I'll make that motion, take it out of general. Obviously, everything's built on requisition.
Absolutely.
But I think if we pledged twenty thousand dollars to match the city's commitment to keeping this parade up and going, I think that would be admirable.
I make that motion.
And I think this is important enough to our county and our city that we need to keep this parade going. And I will second that motion.
Motion is made and seconded to pledge twenty thousand dollars to the Memorial Day Committee.
United are opposed. Motion passes. General can be filed.
Thank you.
I greatly appreciate.
I see the name Veritas on your shirt.
Yes, sir.
It's a work for them.
I do, sir.
I highly respect it. It's a highly respected contracting firm.
Yes, they are.
A lot of work in Grafton.
Oh, boy. Thanks again, guys. I'm going to get out of here. Thank you. Thank you all for listening to me, Ben.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah. Doug, you're up. We will move on to asking for more money. Changing hats for Boys State. Commission is aware, pretty much every year we come, you know, the basic goal of Boys State, basically, to teach better government participation for newcomers of the victim before. That's what we did. We set up the fifty-first state of the United States, Jackson's Mill, every year. It's through the American Legion. Scott, attended Boys State. Will, for our new clerk, I'll throw a name out there, Mikey McDaniel, attended Boys State. There's a lot of people here in town that have done that. Prominent business people went there. This year, we are fortunate that we have four young men that are going, two from Grafton High School, two, do we know the name of it? It's one of the.
It's in Harrison County from Heritage Christian School. They had no one to explain it to. The interesting thing about it, both these young men are from Taylor County, but go to school over there.
Christian Academy.
At the Christian Academy.
It's private.
Yeah, it is private. And they called and wanted to know how they would get sponsors, who would go with them. So our post took them on and said, we'll sponsor you since your post from Taylor County.
So we've got four boys that are going. May or may not be aware that the local legion auxiliary is not active. So we kind of take on the role for both sides. We also have two young ladies from Grafton High School that will be attending Girls State. Last year, I don't know if the name Jordan Nigamire rings any bells with anyone in the room, but she attended Girls State. She was chosen to represent the state of West Virginia as a senator at Girls Nation in Washington, DC. She's done a wonderful job and has come through. And we're hoping that again this year, we might have at least one young lady that would be able to continue on in those roles. But it changes from year to year. But we are also sponsoring two girls this year. So we actually have six students that will be attending either Boys State or Girls State. We have, at a minimum, nine counselors from Taylor County that go down to camp. Again, the price is per body, whether you are a counselor or a citizen, as we call them, student. It's three fifty per this year, and prices have went up. So we're in the neighborhood of approximately fifty-four thousand dollars that we're trying to come up with. We have been to the city. The city was gracious enough to put forth fifteen hundred towards our endeavors. We are looking, still, we are always looking for donations. But we, you know, we're approaching the county again to see what you all can help with us on our endeavors for this year so we can get it through.
Did you miss me when you said fifty-four thousand?
Yes, I did. Fifty-four hundred.
Too many zeros.
Too many zeros.
Things have went on.
I attended math twice at Grafton High School.
How much do you have raised so far then?
We've got the fifteen from the city and through private donations, we're probably looking in the neighborhood of about a thousand.
I think this has been a very good, very good program. Every year, you all have done a tremendous job. That's nice that Nigamire world become a senator, so to speak. So I make the motion, we finish the balance that it needs to make this work.
Second. Motion is made and seconded to improve your balance of funds request. None are opposed. Motion passes. Good luck. Appreciate that. Now, in the past, you all needed an invoice. Do we still need that from us? Yes. I will see that we get that put together and submit it to the clerk so that you all can do that.
Fantastic.
The amount of that will be, what, fifteen hundred less the?
Fifty-four hundred?
Fifty-four hundred.
So twenty-nine hundred dollars. We greatly appreciate that. We also have for, General, we also have for commission, this is our picture, the eighty-third year of camp. We, the boys do the outline of the state, and then the counselors do the number of years. This is not the year-year, but the number of years.
That we've been in the state.
That we've been in the state.
That's pretty neat.
And then this was the picture of the counselors from last year. And we would like to present this to the commission that you all can do with. We hope you hang it somewhere. This is Tony's building, so he'll have to decide.
I'll have to try to decide on where to put this.
Now, which wall are you going to lay the nail in?
Very nice.
Also, along the lines of Boys State, we would also, with the legion, we would like to ask commission if you all would be interested in having an MIAPOW table somewhere here in the building. And if so, we would be more than glad to put that together for you. And we can come in, we can just come in and set it up. If you tell us where you want it, there is a program that goes along with it. We can, if you would like, we can do the whole shebang or just kind of show up and you'll get reports of strange people wearing funny-looking hats coming in and setting tables up. If you would like that here in the building.
General, all right. Chairman, where do you think?
Probably everywhere. I just moved that big printer. We can put it up right there. I can show you guys.
Okay, that would be fine. Just let us know when will work for you all and if you would like the actual full program. We can put that together, or if you just like to kind of set it up, we can set it up. Either way, that'll work. Yeah, get with Jared and coordinate that because he's done a lot of work to improve the hallway as well. And it will turn him.
Yes.
Got a building to be proud of as well. Just thank you guys for all you're doing. Appreciate all your hard work and dedications, everything. This is a work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
It's indeed. All right, we move on down. And you said OEM has rescheduled. So we'll move on down to our six forty-five, which is Rich Borge GHS Training Facility Fund Request. Rich Borge, you are.
Where would you work?
Wherever you'd like.
Wherever you feel comfortable.
If you want to come on up front here, Tony may bite.
That's okay.
Believe me, after forty-one years at Grafton High School, I've seen about everything. I have spent, as I mentioned, forty-one years at Grafton High School as a coach, and now as an athletic director. I don't mean to stand in front of you. One of the things that I've tried to do in the last twelve years as the athletic director is to emphasize the importance of cooperation amongst all of our sport groups in the county, be it anything from hopper and football to youth soccer to any sport that goes on at the middle school. We've opened our facilities up so that we share those facilities, really at different times on a daily basis with these groups. And along with that, we have tried to emphasize improving our facilities as we go along. One of the facilities that has been neglected over the past few years, actually, there really hasn't been a whole lot done to it, has been our facilities building. And one of the real points of emphasis that I've tried to look at over the last few months is our trainer's room. It's accessed and used by many groups. Our trainer at Grafton High School actually tries to help out with the middle school and it may be any of the youth groups that would need that facility. But our facilities have come pretty run down. And I've come to you guys this evening to ask for some help. What we would like to be able to do is to replace our trainers' tables, which are the original ones that we put in, I don't know, I'm guessing probably in nineteen eighty-five or eighty-six. It's been quite a while ago. And we'd also like to put a clock in there that would give us an opportunity to, for people inside the building and trainers' room, your coaches, players, and everyone to be able to actually know what time is left on the main clock. We're looking at, we're asking for some help, especially with those trainers' tables. We're looking at, we're, we're asking for some help, especially with those trainers' tables. Two, one large one and one smaller for our trainer room, a large one and one small one for our trainer's room and our gymnasium. Because they both, they both came from the same place.
You can, you can say it.
The cost of these is, the whole package is just around four thousand dollars. Any help that the commission could provide for us would be greatly appreciated. We, we constantly are, like I said, we're working on our facilities if not bringing outside organizations in to help. We're actually physically doing the labor ourselves. I don't know if you had a chance to see last summer, but we made some major aesthetic improvements to the Claire B. As, as we move forward and, but we're at a point where we could use some help if, if you guys would consider that.
Orville, you were a resident of that building for a while, weren't you?
For quite a while. We've tried a lot of work to build that building.
And it's, and it's still one of the better facilities around. It just needs a little TLC at this point. And we're, don't get me wrong, we're extremely proud of the facilities that we have to offer at Grafton High School and so. It's absolutely the hub of the county when it comes to athletics. And it's a constant, there are very few nights that you go down there that the lights aren't on or somebody's not using that facility at some point. And it's, it's a big source of pride for me. And I know that there are a lot of people that are envious in outside counties of what we're able to do and what we have. Like I said, we'd just like to ask for some help if that's possible.
Sharon, were you not president of the boosters when that?
I don't know if they even have a booster now.
We do, but it's not really as, as, doesn't really have the presence that it did when we were there.
Coach, how do you usually get funding for things along the lines? I mean, you gotta obviously maintain along the way and you'll need new equipment and desks and tables and so forth.
If it's a, if it's a physical facility issue, normally our Board of Education steps in and helps with that. If it's things like desks and tables and chairs and things like that, then that all falls on the athletic department to do. And our problem right now that we're facing, to give you an example, I quit coaching football two years ago. And my last year there, if we purchased a helmet, they were three hundred and twenty-five dollars apiece. This year they were five hundred and ten. A football that was eighty-nine dollars two years ago is now a hundred and ten dollars. A baseball field that cost sixty-five dollars a, a piece for one game six years ago, they're now ninety-five dollars for one game. And our costs continue to go and we have five tooth and nail to keep from raising ticket prices. We don't want to do that. I mean, we may not have any choice down the road, but we're basically using one, one dollar from where we were at twelve years ago. And I don't think you're going to find many places that have, for any, to keep our costs going that much.
You know, I feel that in Taylor County, sports are a very important project. And Rich, you've been involved in it, like you said, for many, many years. I was never into sports myself. I always, I guess, was in business, so I didn't have time for sports. But I've been made, made more aware of sports this year, both through basketball and football by a young man by the name of J.T. Veltre, who's not related to me. But anyway, I finally made contact with him and I'm going to get with him. But anyway, I'll make a motion that we approve this four thousand dollars.
I'll second that. Motion to be made, seconded to approve your four thousand dollar request. None are opposed, motion passes. Thanks, Sharon, for doing, for putting thousands of hours over the last forty years or more. And we do have amazing facilities, especially, you know, in the high school location, the field looks unbelievable. Hopefully, we can continue to improve, you know, the baseball field, softball field, tennis courts look amazing already, but I think we, we have a lot to be proud of and thankful for as well.
We certainly do. I, you know, I, I just want to say this, you know, the people in Taylor County sometimes are at odds about different things. But in all of the years I've been a teacher and a coach at Grafton High School, I have never not seen them support children. And you guys are another classic example of that. This isn't anything that's going to, what it's going to do is it's just going to make things better for the kids that are down there. And honestly, I wish that I were here. I wish that we had, you know, a constant flow of money, but it's like many organizations, we just don't. And, you know, I, I thank the good Lord that we have people like you all and people in Taylor County that continue to help out and make it the best that we possibly can with what we have for the kids.
Hey, John, I'm not sure everybody's aware, but the boosters used to be very, very active and the all sports mothers were very, very active. I'm sure that they still are to an extent.
Yes.
Okay. But even back in my tenure over there, we wanted to get anything done, we had to do it ourselves.
Yes.
And with the help of the boosters and the all sports mothers, we had little fawns and all that would make money for the, you know, packets for the kids to play ball with and such. I think, you know, you wouldn't be here. I, I, I know you. You wouldn't be here if it wasn't necessary to be here. And we appreciate, I appreciate everything you do for the kids.
Thank you.
Rich, I've looked at you as a pretty strong sports person, but there was one other person in the county that I also looked at as being a strong person and that was Homer Knotts.
Absolutely.
He was very active in what he did. Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much, you sir.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move right along. A little bit ahead of schedule. Ms. Kathleen Jeffries from EMS.
Good to see you, Kathleen. My golly.
I don't know if you are or not.
Oh, yes. There's always, there's always good things.
Well.
You've been to a lot of meetings and I've been part of.
Show me in the West Virginia code where an ambulance in a joint county can't go into a lot closer county in emergency. Show me in the code. You guys have the code? Well, do you, Orville?
I haven't read them. I mean, I don't have.
Do you know what the code is?
I know most of it.
Well, where, what's that one located under? Because it's not there. Okay. I came here a while back to ask for quicker ambulance service, but it didn't do any good. In our section of Taylor County, you know, we pay a big share of the county income, a big share. You gave our money to other things that isn't near as important as human life. I wrote a letter to Governor Jim Justice and Baby Dog explaining what you're doing here in Taylor County with the ambulance service. I got a call back from the letter. They gave me this info that I'm going to give you. The guy gave me his name and phone number and said if I needed more help, to give him a call. He's out of Charleston, Baby Dog, Justice to Baby Dog, had him call me. Mansion's office knows about it too. It's time you tell nine-one-one to tell Bridgeport in an emergency, let their ambulance come out there, but a transport, yes, it can be Taylor County Emergency Squad. Now, let me give you these papers. This come from the state. I'm getting them apart. We'll have it let in. This come from Governor Justice's office. Y'all might want to read them.
Ms. Ms. Jeffries, if, if you would, for everyone's knowledge on the floor, what, what's your, what's your request? I mean, you have concerns about EMS dispatch on the timeliness of
Yeah.
The EMS being dispatched, correct?
Correct. If, if you call nine-one-one the year before that waiting for Taylor County ambulance whilst your father died. You know, oh, that's not good. Your cats wouldn't want that to happen to your family. And Bridgeport can be there in five minutes. They have an ambulance and all right here at the hospital. And yet, Taylor County will either be twenty-five, thirty, sometimes an hour. You know, now how is that feasible? How is that adequate emergency service for people? You wouldn't want it like that.
Kathleen, you're right. It doesn't make sense, you know, you're close to service that can handle your situation faster than what we have. I don't know what the regulation is, Orville. You're our EMS person, but when you call nine-one-one, it gives you is there a system whereby you could call a Bridgeport number to give you the emergency service?
They're not supposed to come into Taylor County due to the funding.
The hell with the funding, there's no worry about it.
Well, tell him and everybody about the funding. That's what I say, the hell with the funding.
Who can't come in because of funding?
Bridgeport. That's what you told me the last time I didn't remember. You said it had to do with the funding, which is why they weren't coming in. And I, if you remember, I told you that you thought a dollar was worth more than a human life.
Orville, can I ask that?
Sure.
Okay, how it works is we re- each county, each county, Bridgeport is a city municipality, it receives money from, from its citizens in Bridgeport, right? They pay for that service. Harrison County pays for the Harrison County ambulance. So there are, each, each place has their own little section, right? Your money, as a taxpayer, goes to Taylor County EMS. Ergo, Taylor County EMS is your, the, Taylor County is, we're given as our first due. However, if we are delayed, we can ask for mutual aid. Bridgeport ha- can come in to you. And they have been asked to come to you. Just because we ask them to come to you does not mean that they have to. They can absolutely scratch. They may be willing to, and they are willing. They, they have signed a mutual aid agreement. But what you have to understand is there's not an EMS ambulance waiting for every citizen of the county.
I realize that.
So, yeah, and there's not one in Bridgeport or Harrison County. So if you happen, and as much as I hate to say this, and I'm not trying to be insensitive at all, but timing is everything. If I'm at her house, her grand, her grandma is, is having a heart attack and I've taken forty-seven under her house. And my other lieutenant is at her house because her grandma fell and broke her hip. We cannot be at your house.
I understand that.
We've called Bridgeport. Now, mind you, Bridgeport has its own citizens and they only have two ambulances. Sometimes they only have one. But they're over at your brother's house in Bridgeport at that heart attack. Sometimes they cannot get to you any quicker than what they, and then you're getting, it goes on to the next county, the next county, the next county. We have it layered out, ten people wa- or ten agencies wide. There are times when things are so bad, especially like through COVID, things were so bad, we were so busy, that you would have people, the next ambulance that could get here was from Kingwood or Dodgerage County. And yet they still came. They still tried to make it there. But it's not a matter of people don't want to be there or they can't be there or that Bridgeport doesn't want to come over.
It takes too long. It takes them a half hour to get out there or better.
But I can't, we ask for mutual aid from Bridgeport. If they're not available, we can't make them drop their own citizens. Nope, you can't go see and take care of that one to come to you. You're right, I am. I have volunteered and I am paid. And I'm here all for you, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. I come in my housecoat and slippers some days, believe me.
Well, that's your job.
You don't pay me to come out in my housecoat and slippers?
Hey, the sheriff come out there one time, the other sheriff in his pajamas. But then, when she called nine-one-one.
We try. Everybody tries. They're very best.
Please send me nine-one-one. My dad is unresponsive. They said, we're not allowed to. We have to call Taylor County EMS.
They have to call us first, you're right. You are our first team.
Boozeville, Boozeville don't even have an ambulance. But yet, Bridgeport could come out.
First responders.
Fires.
They have first responders. They don't have an ambulance, but they will come out and they are CPR trained. They are professionals just like everybody else, just like Bridgeport, just like Harrison County, just like Taylor County, just like Flemington. And they will come and they will help you. And they may or may not be able to save your life, but they will give it their darndest.
I can tell you're with the emergency squad. But you know, you don't live out in our area. And our taxes is paying a good bit of all this work for the county. You know that, Tony. Look at that big housing development, double S Taylor. Those aren't stick houses.
You're paying taxes in Taylor County. You're a Taylor County resident. And our EMS is located as centrally as you absolutely can. She's right. If we, if we move the EMS closer to Flemington to appease you, what about the people on one nineteen north?
We're not in Flemington.
Oh, in the western end of the county where you're talking about.
Well, you know, you can't use our tax dollars for everything else. Maybe you ought to buy a little tract of land out there and then purchase an ambulance and a fire truck, man, twenty-four hours a day. I mean, I know you guys wouldn't want to wait for an ambulance until your family member died.
I think our EMS does a pretty fine job with the staff that they have and the funding that we have. My, my folks live on one nineteen north on Oak Grove. My, my parents had to have an ambulance come out a couple of years ago. They were there extremely quick.
Well, they're not bad.
This was, this was four years ago. Now, it's, it's a fifteen minute drive if you start downtown, no matter how you look at it. You gotta think a call has to go into nine-one-one, they have to phone the dispatch, then they have to send ambulances out from there. I mean, thirty minutes clear on the other end of the county isn't necessarily unresponding. I mean, we can't just beam them there.
I know that.
They can't get there any faster than they.
It's twelve point two miles from Taylor County Emergency Squad to Smith Road. For Bridgeport is four point nine. There is a big difference. Tony, I think you see where I'm going.
Have, in the past, have you called the Bridgeport Fire Department and they refused to come?
No.
No.
They were down there fighting that fire at, who was it, John? Down there on Collie Road. Matter of fact, they got there before anybody else did and they were called there.
You know, it, it, it does seem not right when you're next door to an emergency service, but you have to depend on an emergency service that's not next door. I don't know if anything can be worked out, that it could be a mutual aid type situation.
It's an emergency, left three and a fourth hour.
They already have mutual aid.
There, there already is.
Okay, how come nine-one-one can't call them?
The way the mutual aid works.
The mutual aid is for fire departments.
The mutual aid is for ambulance also. I am the chief of the Boozeville Volunteer Fire Department.
Well, you don't have an ambulance.
No, I do not, but we do have first responders.
Yeah.
The way the mutual aid works, your house is in my first due area.
Yeah.
Your house is in.
It used to be Bridgeport Service Desk.
Bridgeport has their own area. I have my area. Taylor County is, EMS is also your first due area. You're in their first due area. Bridgeport is a mutual aid, just like their. Bridgeport is a mutual aid, just like their my mutual aid on fires. You mentioned the call out on the brush fire up behind Fort Tiara Arena.
Yeah.
I had firefighters on scene, but they needed help, so Bridgeport came.
I mean, Bridgeport.
The way the mutual aid works is since you're in Taylor County EMS's first due area, they call Taylor County first. If Taylor County can't get to it, and I've heard them on the radio say, tone next due. So they'll tone next due, whether it be Flemington or Bridgeport, or whatever other agency, whatever part of the county it's in, then they tone them. But the call goes to Taylor County first.
Yeah.
I live in the west end of the county and I.
You ought to have mutual aid with Marion. You ought to have Marion come to first.
Their first due.
We do.
We do.
But it's first due because it's Taylor County, it goes to Taylor County EMS first, and then it goes to Marion.
Especially if, if it isn't unresponsive, we will ask them to dual tone. Go ahead and start Bridgeport that way. We will be heading your way and starting Bridgeport, but they have to give us the opportunity. We can't just take the, the citizens of Taylor County cannot take and use Bridgeport without.
Maybe we don't have that section and extend to Harrison County.
You, you're welcome to move there. You are a Taylor County resident, you pay Taylor County taxes. We have Taylor County people working as hard as Taylor County people can. If it's not good enough and you want to move to Taylor or to Harrison County, if you think you're more secure there, then that's, you have the liberty to do that, ma'am.
You know, this is a situation that not only, uh, this, the situation goes, there's other people that have the same situation. Maybe not necessarily Taylor County or Harrison, but Mon County or wherever. There's people that live closer to a service that, that you would think could service them quicker than their hometown. So, uh, really.
Hypothetically though, because if Bridgeport, if you're a resident of Bridgeport, you're paying for that EMS and fire service as a taxpayer of Bridgeport city limits. You're, you're not paying for the outlying areas of Bridgeport. You're paying for the city limits of Bridgeport.
It used to be when Tim Vanel died. What's that been? Twenty years ago, fifteen? Three ambulances from Bridgeport was right up there beside of us working with him, three of them. I didn't even see, uh, Taylor County. Taylor County didn't start all this BS until they started getting our tax dollars. And when it come out on our taxes, then that's when they started getting a little choosy. But Bridgeport used to come out there all the time. They come out there one time and got my mother. And I mean, they used to come out there all the time because we suppose. And you got Rain Tree in Fairfield, part of it's in Taylor, part of it's in Harrison. Now, what do you do there? Just tell them you don't want to bother coming?
Part of it's my first due area, part of it's Bridgeport's first due area.
Yeah. I mean, it's screwed up. You need to have some cooperation. This first area, I mean.
And we do. That's what the mutual aid is.
Well, then why don't they call them? Why didn't they call them when, you know, she asked them to? Because her dad is unresponsive. If that's the case, they should have called Bridgeport. They could have come. But Bridgeport could have got there first, like she knows says. She don't know if he'll ever, if he would have made it or not. She'll never know.
Did this, this happen recently?
It was last night.
Yeah.
Other.
Girl leaves the car. She was coming tonight. She worked the hospital and the doctor had to do a bunch of stuff over it. She called me, apologized. But, uh, she begged them. She was crying. She said, please come. Oh, we can't. We have to get paid repaying. And she said, he's unresponsive. And they couldn't do it. And I think if it's an emergency, they ought to be able to come. They can call them too. They can come. The Bridgeport can get here and do many life-saving things that needs done. Then Taylor County come and they can get the money for transporting them.
That's not how that works.
Don't tell me they don't get paid for transport.
I didn't say they didn't get paid for the transport, but that's not how that works. If Bridgeport's there first,
It's their patient.
It's their patient. They will transport it.
People, we pay big taxes. People out there, I have talked to several in the past two or three days. They're willing. There is some that pay Bridgeport a certain amount each year.
They're in Harrison County, not Taylor.
Huh?
They're in Harrison County, not Taylor.
No, they're not. No, they're not. Don't tell me I know where they are. I know where the founders is at.
If they're in Taylor County and they're paying the Bridgeport fire fee, they're wrong. They do not have to pay that.
But they did it because they want Bridgeport.
It's almost. No, that, that doesn't matter. It's not how that works.
I know they won't. Well, this guy in Charleston told me, you know, you re- you read that, and because it, uh, it tells you what the code is. You are responsible for adequate emergency service. Now, if you guys don't want to do anything, well, that's you. If you feel guilty about it.
Let, let me ask you this, Ms. Jeffers. What would your solution be if you were on this side of the table?
I don't like to see anybody die.
I don't either. Nobody here does.
Well, I don't know about that, but I don't like to see.
What would your, what would your solution be?
Let them take, if somebody, if it's an emergency, let Bridgeport come out there.
We have mutual aid agreements. We already do that. That's.
No, they don't because they would not call them.
We have folks from Boozville. We have folks from EMS here.
You're loaded up against me tonight.
They're, they're telling, they're telling me that we have mutual aid. I'm going to believe them that we do.
Well, then why didn't they call them? When she begged them to call them. You, she begged them to call them. She, the girl did. Leaves a car, called nine one one and said, please send Bridgeport. He's unresponsive. They said, we can't. We have to call Taylor County EMS. She's told them that herself right here.
That is the nine one one system. That's not.
Well, then somebody goes straight to nine one one system out. He's with them.
No, he's, they, they don't sit, they're not the nine one one system. There's a whole another group of people and that is in Harrison County.
Right. They probably have protocol as well. If you call from Taylor County, or if you call from Shinston, they're gonna send out whoever is in your region, just like this gentleman here said, they have first due. Is that, am I saying that correctly?
Well, they built a building out there in Harmony Grove to put a fire truck in so they could get part of Taylor County's taxes.
Who's they?
Boozville.
Boozville.
Maybe Bridgeport.
I mean, Boozville Fire Hall used to be down at the.
We have two stations. Our main station is in Marion County, and we do have a station in Taylor County, which was set by the state fire marshal. Our area. We did build a building out there to better serve that end of the county.
Right.
We don't have ambulances. They put an ambulance out there once. It was never manned. There's no facilities for them to stay there or live there. It's just a garage.
Yeah, I know. They should have built them a, built a little trailer or something there. I don't like to see people die because they're waiting for an ambulance.
I don't either. I don't think that's in question here about people not wanting people to die.
What if somebody's bleeding?
Well, every, every call to nine one one is going to be an emergency. That's.
No, no, they're not. Sometimes they'll call and tell them they need a transport.
Well, possibly, but if you have, there's an emergency nine one one call, then that's when they're dispatching because the nine one one center makes that determination. The, the nine one one center makes the determination. Am I correct on that? On the level of the emergency? I'm not on the, I'm the ambulance department. I'm, I'm just assuming.
Yes.
And they can, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but can you not, if you're on your way to a transport and an emergency call comes in, you can divert without any issue. Unless they've already picked up the patient. At that time, they're committed.
But I'm sure you wouldn't want it happening to your family.
It's happened to my family.
Well.
It's happened to friends of mine on Corden Branch, where we needed a Bridgeport ambulance because Taylor County was tied up. Guess what? Bridgeport didn't show up either. Marion County did, because they were all tied up.
How long ago is that been?
Two years ago.
When was it on Corden Branch?
They no longer live here. They're actually on Taylor School Road.
Well.
I live off Corden Branch. I understand.
I understand.
Our whole family lives.
But it's not, it's not us. It, a lot of the problem lies with nine one one dispatch.
The guy in Charleston from Justice's office gave me this information, said to give it to you that it's different than what most of them, he said, most commissioners don't even know it. And he said, if you have any problems, call me. He was out of Justice's office.
You know, Kathleen, go back to what I said a bit ago. It doesn't make sense to, to have an ambulance service next door to you except to get one that's a distance away. Doesn't matter what county they're in or what they're in.
Right.
What I would like for us to do, fellas, is study this information. And let's see if we can't come up with something that would take care of these particular problems.
If, if we had an emergency, they could start Bridgeport and they can come. You know, there's no problem there. But maybe they could save somebody's life.
Yes, if that's, if that's a possibility. I don't know. I'm not in the emergency department, uh.
You have to have the agreeance of Bridgeport to accept a new first due area, is what you would have.
Bridgeport will accept it.
Bridgeport is a paid fire department. They will do what Bridgeport City Council says to do.
They have already talked to them. They said they will come out there.
They'll told you a fire fee also.
Yep.
Well, let me tell you, if you can have an ambulance, we're already paying the fire fee and it's not doing us any good. I'd pay a fire fee if they could come out there, and I think most of people probably would too. You know, if you could get an ambulance, I'd pay a fire fee. I don't think anybody wants to die. I mean, I'm eighty-two and I, I don't want to die.
I'm older than you are.
Well, how old are you?
Eighty-five.
Well, you only caught me for three years.
Let's take a look at this, fellas, and see if there's something that can be worked out. It, it, she's got a valid question, you know, there's no rhyme or reason why she's sitting close to emergency service but can't have it.
I mean, do we have, I mean, do we, we, we have recordings of all the, the dispatch when a call comes in.
Yes, they do.
Everything's on a timer. Before, before I sign with anybody, I want physical evidence of the call coming in. I mean, you, you're, you're, you keep going back to the same way it was here last time. The call's coming in. And you took, you said it was a half an hour. Well, it's your word against theirs, but there's proof in the pudding somewhere.
I gotta give Boozville credit. They got there in eight or nine minutes.
So we had a first responder there in eight minutes.
Yeah, but she couldn't, you know, do much, she said.
But we had a first responder there in eight minutes. So let's, let's, let's make that known, that you called nine one one. You had a first responder on site within eight minutes.
But, you know, they would buck on it.
Buckle what? What, what, what are we talking about?
We don't have a choice. We absolutely do not have a choice.
They're coming.
He'll come down online biscuits.
They're, they're coming and they're.
We have no choice.
According to you, they're, they're still twenty-two minutes out. But we have a first responder there for the non-responsive person. I don't think we can get any faster than eight minutes. I mean, it would take me eight minutes. I, I live on La Christiane. It'd take me eight minutes to get home right now if I walked out the door.
They have an ambulance out the hospital.
Who's they?
Bridgeport.
Okay.
Out of UHC. All they gotta do is come down there and hit seventy-three and ride up Corden Branch.
What up, what's, we're not Harrison County. We are.
I know you're not, but you said you didn't think you could get anything any quicker where you could.
We have a first responder from the Boozville Volunteer Fire Department that showed up on it inside eight minutes. Eight minutes.
All right. You guys furnish them an ambulance, fully equipped, twenty-four hour service, man.
They have a first responder that showed up at eight minutes. They said they had an ambulance at one time.
That was in the substation.
That was in the substation and it was a Taylor County ambulance. It was not ours.
You know, get them an ambulance and, and make it, pay them to be on duty twenty-four hours a day.
You know, I'm hearing two and three different stories from everybody. You know, my understanding, Flemington had a contract submitted to Bridgeport to run an ambulance there and City Council denied it. Now you're saying that they're ready to, to do it. Isn't that true?
That's correct.
Yes.
City Council, Bridgeport City Council denied it. They were, Bridgeport, Flemington was willing to.
I'll check on that.
Flemington willing to pay these firefighters.
They didn't want to pay what Bridgeport wanted.
Oh, that's not the scoop that I got. It wasn't that's a pay.
I will check on it tomorrow.
I think that'd be a good, a good idea because.
I will.
My mistake. I'm not mistaken that the, the council, Bridgeport denied it. Wouldn't that move?
Well.
You know, we already have.
I hope.
They already have.
I tell you, some of them have said, if this happens again, and somebody could be saved and nobody gets there, they're gonna sue the county.
You can't say nobody got there. Somebody got there in eight minutes. Somebody got there.
Emergency car with equipment and stuff.
Well, the fire department.
That's what I'm saying. They're gonna sue.
Our fire, our firefighters, our volunteers and our paid firefighters are to trade the.
Are you married to any of them?
Am I married to any of them?
Yeah.
To who?
Well, the emergency squad people.
No.
Oh, okay. Just checking.
Absolutely not. No, I, I am not a first responder at all. I have no, I have no experience in first responding.
I believe in life, not death.
I do believe in life as well, but I do believe when you picked up the phone, you called, husband's unresponsive. Our county got there in eight minutes. Our county people.
Your EMS didn't.
Our EMS is on the way.
The EMS person that showed up for my department is an EMT for Taylor County Rescue Squad. They would not leave her out there by herself.
No, they stayed there with her. She gave them credit, you know, but there wasn't anything else that she could do. Now, maybe she had.
We have AEDs, we have oxygen.
Something like that. They might have done something.
We have an AED, we have oxygen, we have everything on there.
Yeah, by the way, you left your oxygen tank at somebody's house. You didn't want it, I guess. He was already dead when she called and you guys come out and brought oxygen and took it in and you left it. She called to see if you wanted it and nobody wanted it.
Is that directed to me?
Huh?
Is that directed to me?
It's directed to anybody with the emergency squad. Why'd you leave oxygen there?
Probably because, you know what? Now is not the time, of course. But you. You have no idea the toll this job takes on people. Yes, they'll forget equipment once in a while, because maybe they have to go back to the office and cry it out. They take it personally. I take it personally. Your family's death, I take it personally, and I take it home with me. And if I could magically be myself over there, I would. But I, I'm out in my slippers and I've done everything humanly possible to save and help the people of Taylor County. And to sit here and be berated by you because they're giving their all. I'm giving my all, and I know my employees give their all. And they get paid less than any other county around here, and they still drag it out every day.
I give you credit for one thing. John's brother Butch got hit with that car out on Thali Falls Road or somewhere out in there. When they got him to University Hospital, they said Taylor County Emergency Squad did an excellent job, that he shouldn't have been alive when he arrived at Ruby.
It's that way every day. We have no choice what call we take. We take the very first one that comes in and we run our butts to the ground. Now, I'm sorry, I'm very emotional. I really need to step out because I'm not going to be crying much longer.
He lives two miles from my main station. He lives in Harrison County. My main station is in Marion County. I can't go on a call at his house because it's Bridgeport's first area.
And we're in Harrison County, not in Bridgeport. We pay taxes, they call it. We pay taxes to Bridgeport.
Where you live, Detroit lane?
No. Right on Middle Town Road.
He lives right on Middle Town Road. My next one's a trailer car. He lives right on Middle Town Road, my next one's a trailer park, well, what used to be next to the trailer park.
We pay taxes to.
He used to be in Boozville Fire Department.
There used to be a lot of people in there. What happened, that guy lived out on Harmony Grove, he used to run it?
Carol.
I don't know where he was.
Carol Tidgen's still in the Fire Department, he's our Vice President.
He lived out there, little short guy.
Yep.
Yep. Had Vanco welding, he's still in the Fire Department.
Well, Miss Jeffries, I, I understand your concerns. We are all concerned about the life and welfare of our, of our, of our people. And, you know, your, your concern is duly noted. I, I believe wholeheartedly that our EMS and first responders do an excellent job. And, uh, I, I still, other than building a new facility out beside your house.
You don't have to build it outside of my house.
There's really, there's really eight minutes, and my, my book is fast enough, and that is.
Well, I'm glad you.
And I, like I said, I, we can, we can discuss the papers that you gave us, we will look over them, that's for sure.
Will that come from, from Governor's office?
And that is fine, but.
I think the Governor knows.
I believe, I believe as a commission, we are, we have established and ma- and maintain an adequate emergency ambulance system for the area. In my opinion, if, uh, if it holds any water, but.
Are you the President?
Yes, ma'am.
Tony, when was the last time I was here? You got emotive, didn't you, Tony?
I lost my.
Tony quit, he threw me under the bus.
Well, think it over and see if there's something we can do. And, you know, I'm gonna call Charleston again, call that guy, because he told me if there was any problems, call him, because it's up to the, you know, we should be able to get a first responder, I mean, uh, ambulance, not first, but, you know, like, an ambulance with the equipment and everything. And then the emergency squad can come, no problem. But they need somebody to try to save, save a life.
That's, I believe our people do an excellent job trying to save a life, these gentlemen right here included.
I don't like seeing people die, but that's.
Nobody does.
Because those that die out there, you're not gonna get taxes out of them anymore.
Well, thank you for coming, Miss Jeffries.
Get your phone.
All right.
Moving along.
Some situations we just can't change.
Was anybody else here for the concern of the Western Counties EMS dispatch?
Uh, we just came to see what was going on with that. We're actually brought up in our meeting, our business meeting, that we're gonna try to have a representative from our fire station at the County Commission Meeting, just to represent our end of the county and issues that we see coming up. Might help you guys.
Tell us why we're talking about this evening, ma'am. I understand her point, but we already have all this in place, correct?
Yes, sir.
I mean, for instance, I don't know where she lives particularly.
I know where she lives on Smith Road.
But, you know, I've driven, because I've heard of all these time restraints. I have come up, and I have driven from the rescue squad all the way down through Happy Bow and up around and out to seventy-three. And it didn't take me near thirty minutes.
I don't know why she started thirty minutes.
This, this is, could be. Time the call goes in, time they figure out what's going on, who they need to dispatch, time they dispatch it. Time we have to go get in the truck, start it, roll it down the road, and then you get behind people that don't wanna get out of your way.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the last time she was here, we had actually pulled nine one one, just to check those timelines, and it wasn't.
No, the times didn't match from nine one one to what we were presented.
Right.
But an, another thing too, if I, if I'm correct, is that, let's say, for instance, I call nine one one. They tone Taylor County. Taylor County has three minutes to be on the road. That's for them people who, if it's in the middle of the night, to get out of bed, get dressed, hop in an ambulance, they have three minutes. If they don't make it in three minutes to tone, nine one one automatically tones.
Yep, does it too.
Bridgeport.
Bridgeport.
Or the next two ambulances.
Marion County.
Yours would be Marion County.
Yours would be Marion County, yeah.
Because I'm only three mile, three and a half mile from Whitehall Substation, they have an ambulance there. But Taylor County would be toned down first. If they can't answer the call within three minutes, not be at my home, but answer the call in three minutes and be on the road, then they automatically tone the next dude.
And if there's no one at that station at South Fairmont, or they're on a call, then it goes to the Marion County Station downtown Fairmont.
So then if they don't respond in three minutes, then.
Then we go to Bridgeport.
Yeah.
Go to Bridgeport, so it's already said.
It's, it's already established.
It's already, there's.
There are issues.
Michelle said it's ten layers deep on what their protocol is to do with the next step. It's not like they're picking and choosing who the heck they call.
They weren't refusing to call Bridgeport, they had to follow.
They have to follow their protocols, they have standards that they have to go by. But apparently that's not good enough for some people.
You know, and my understa- I've sat on the nine one one board. My understanding is Harrison County's in the worst shape than what we are.
Marion County is too.
Marion County dispatchers are, they're human, and they make mistakes, and, you know, just like any of us do. Yeah, sometimes those mistakes can cost a few minutes to get an ambulance or get the right fire department tone. We had a brush fire the other day that we, Pleasant Valley was toned for, and it was in our area. By the time they figured it out, we could already been there, and we were delayed seven or eight minutes. Things happen. Phone calls don't, you know, people don't know where they're at.
Somebody called it in from the interstate, turned out it was a brush pile up on Sweets Run Road. But they said they were by the storage buildings, and fire rescue took that as the storage buildings up there near Whitehall, so they toned Valley. But it was, they could see it from VIP storage there on seventy-three, and it was back Sweets Run. And it wasn't even a brush fire, it was a brush pile.
Yep.
It's.
There are issues with nine one one dispatching and getting toned properly, you know, we've, we've had issues before. But it's all set up, and normally, it runs pretty flawlessly. But again, we're all human and mistakes happen at times.
Yeah, you know, I, I know when, when we go to meetings, we discuss different things of its nature, and for instance, if there's ambulance in Shinston, Bridgeport may not be in Shinston, Bridgeport's not just sitting there on two ambulances, they're, they're running all over Harrison County as well as Bridgeport.
And Moore does, I mean, they all do. Not a Ford has ambulances now, there was a Salem ambulance on Middle Town Road the other day.
Really, for as efficient as the system is, it's pretty amazing that it's efficient as it is. I mean, for you guys, on the situation that she's talking about, for you guys to respond to that situation in eight minutes, to me is.
And we're volunteers, we're on in-station.
Pretty amazing, yeah, you guys were volunteers, you were on the road as soon as that call came out, and bam, you were there. To me, that's impressive, and, and I know nothing about first responders having or, or what happens, but eight minutes to me.
From the time that we get.
Is extremely impressive.
They, it's three minutes from the time that we get toned till they ask our status. And then it's another minute before they send our tones again. And then it's a minute after that that they send the next new fire department. So it's, that's six minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
But.
I, I, I.
In some, in some calls, I have other departments automatically toned with us, just.
Which is what I was gonna mention, I don't know if it could be even done.
I don't know.
For instance, we are dual toned, we were dual toned, with Pleasant Valley on any and every car wreck, fire, or anything in our area when we were down a fire truck. We needed help, we have them automatically set to dual tone us, so they could be on the road at the same time as we were. Maybe, don't know, Bridgeport and Taylor County EMS on Corbin Branch, Smith Road, Taylor School, Freeman Hill, can be dual toned. And whoever gets on first, is seen first, can cancel the other one. I don't know if that's even feasible with, uh, being a paid department versus.
Well, they're both.
Well, they're both paid departments, so you're still getting the money from that patient. I, I don't know if that's a way of going about it or not.
Well, if that's a possibility, maybe we ought to look into it.
That would be up to the.
You know.
That would be up to the nine one one board.
Nine one one in Taylor and.
Bridgeport.
And Bridgeport County Council.
And Bridgeport City's Council.
And Bridgeport City Council, yeah, and Bridgeport City Council already said, no putting people in Flemington, but I don't know if they'll say no to that or not.
They're not, they're not manning anybody in the county.
That's what I'm saying, I don't know what they'll say about that.
They could come out of their substation at the FBI Center, UHC, and.
Wouldn't their town council station be closer?
Depending on which end.
You know, I think all you folks in the emergency services are, want to save lives, of course, that's why.
There's not one person in the fire department or EMS that doesn't wanna save lives.
Exactly.
If they don't wanna save lives, they don't need to be in the fire department or any of them.
Exactly, so we just have to look at things and see if we can work out something, like you said, that dual time, that sounds.
Like I said, I don't know if Bridgeport will go for it or not, they're really not happy to put anybody out of the county. They can man it out of their two stations that are very close to each end of Corbin Branch, like she was saying. I mean, she has a legitimate point, there is better care, not better care, but faster or closer care at times. But if Bridgeport are both on calls, Taylor County's still gonna be the closest. Time you get Ann Moore or Shinston.
On that particular end of the county, let's, let's say, for instance, Taylor County is unavailable, Bridgeport's unavailable, Marion?
If we go to Marion, if it's on the Boozville side, if it's out Corbin Branch, it either goes to Flemington or Ann Moore.
Well, okay.
Or Harrison County, I don't know the exact lineup that they have. But, I mean, Marion County has come into Taylor County, no questions asked. Uh, the bad turn in Boozville that we have car wrecks in all the time.
Which one?
We've, we've had Marion County into Taylor County many a times in that turn. Never, never once had a squawk out of anybody. So.
Or, well, you know where Ronnie Stickler's driveway is, right?
I'm sorry?
Ronnie Stickler's driveway.
Kennedy Drive.
Kennedy Drive, where the old Iron Bridge in the short term.
Yeah.
We had a car wreck there.
Two summers ago, right?
No, this is two months ago, two months ago, it had on collision right there, and we had three patients. Well, we had four patients, because one was a little girl, she rode with her mom. I sat there and waited for an ambulance for the third patient. I know it was half hour, thirty-five minutes, something like that. They finally got Harrison County EMS to show up, because Marion County didn't have any more ambulances. Um, Bridgeport scratched, and they finally got a Harrison County ambulance to come and pick up the third patient, the last patient. But we had to sit there and wait with them the whole time until we got an ambulance. It's not that people don't want to help, it's, they're already busy doing something else.
There's not an endless supply of EMS workers. Like Michelle said, they're, they're underpaid and overworked, and it's not a, it's not a good career, uh. I mean, it's.
Not getting rich yet.
No, you're not doing it to get rich, you're doing it to help people.
Brian, what does it mean when they scratch?
Uh, scratch?
Yeah, they're busy.
They're busy basically, or, and they can't come. Basically, them telling headquarters or fire rescue or whoever it is that they scratched, is to let them know to go ahead and tone the next person.
Scratch them off the list.
I, I hope that you guys know how much we appreciate what you do, and the career path that you took is.
I mean, I've been in the fire department for twenty-eight years now.
Right.
Since I was eighteen in high school.
Without people like you, then there are gonna be more.
And when I joined the fire department, he was in the fire department, then he went to Virginia Beach and was a firefighter down there for twenty.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years.
Do y'all get a lot of calls here in the county that are not true emergency calls, like he did in the city?
Not as much as we used to.
As what, uh, what are you talking about?
Just like someone that should've driven themselves or their family to urgent care instead of calling EMS.
So the EMS does, EMS does, the fire department.
We don't have the fire department, if it's. The way they're turning out the fire department or EMS calls is if it's like a general illness, like I have a headache, we don't go on that. But if it's cardiac arrest, um.
Well, it's not.
CVA, traumatic injury, something like that, then yes, we do. But somebody has a sniffles.
Y'all should not, I should not have acted that way.
You're fine, Michelle.
You're fine.
But my people, and myself included, we have a lot of dedication, and I just can't take that anymore.
Someone called me from Boozville Fire Department, I'll tell you, Sunday, was one of you fellows or not?
When?
When?
Oh, no, that was Steve Fletcher.
Okay, that's right, I remember.
Yeah, yeah, wasn't that?
Yeah, Stevie told me to talk to you.
Yes. I'm bad about remembering names, but, uh, anyway, thank you all for coming, we appreciate everything.
Anytime. And Stevie, after he talked to you, is actually how I found out about this going on.
Is that right, all right.
I just haven't told him yet.
Well, we all try to work together and make things better for everybody concerned, I mean, that's, that's our, that's our job, and, 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 and that's your job too, and everybody, so, you know, we all do the best we can.
And I'm sure things get modified and streamlined, as it goes, it's never a bold process, so.
You look at yesterday, if you look at the cat yesterday, there was absolutely no calls from midnight, the, we had a call at, on Maple Avenue. And there was no nine one ones in this county till almost eight-thirty this morning. So, and you paid, this is a daily campaign, paid for two paramedics and two EMTs to sit there all day long. Now, can we guarantee that day's gonna happen again? No, because today, they got their hinnies kicked, they had call after call after call.
So you're telling me my wife's gonna be like it?
Huh?
I said, so you're telling me my wife's gonna be like it?
Probably, she's probably gonna have charts left over, because it's, it, they just got their, it's just, and that's why I was trying to explain very calmly. And we have two trucks on twenty-four hours a day, some days we have three during the day, if we know we're going to have a train sport. But one truck's it, has a fall over here, and one truck has a cardiac arrest here, and a CVA goes out over there. We can't help that. And Flemington comes, Boozville Fire comes and, and stabilizes as best they can till one of them get freed up. Bridgeport comes, Harrison County comes, Ann Moore comes, there's mutual aid, like I said, ten D. But everybody's, EMS, if, all you have to do is read the news, EMS is a nationwide shortage, national.
Cross the borders period, right?
Yeah, cross the borders period is a national shortage, and there's a big crisis in volunteerism.
Does that, do fire departments still have their rapid response?
They do, and they come and stabilize, you know, in their first year. It's, it's just a nationwide problem that the three of you, God bless you as much as you like to, you can't fix it.
You know, when I look at it, they call over right now.
Yes.
For today.
Yes.
Bridgeport has two ambulances, they've been on twenty-eight calls today, so when they come, come to Taylor County. I mean, it's, it's right there, there's twenty-eight.
They need us for mutual aid as well, I'm sure.
Sometimes.
They've been on twenty-eight calls today, on two ambulances.
Yep.
I think, I think that, I think that our EMS does a fantastic job, our, our volunteer fire departments do, our paid graphic fire department does as well, so. I think we should be thankful for what we have, for sure, but thank you guys for everything that you do.
I'm very proud of all of our emergency services, fire departments and whatever, because I think y'all do a fantastic job, you know, and, and, and you have to like people, or you wouldn't be there, so keep up the good work. We get these situations that we have to. We get these situations that we have to discuss and cause. A new uh.
Stress.
Things that you shouldn't, so anyway, we'll work together to get, make things work.
And I agree, it should go concentric circles, it really should. It should go concentric circles out from each agency and where they overlap, they should be dual toned. I don't know how to make that work, I'm not the one in charge of that.
Michelle, we talked about that while you were in the room.
Right.
It's dual toned. Cause when we. The fire, Boozeville Fire Department was having Valley dual toned with us. When we were short people, or we had a truck down or something like that, we had another fire department dual toned with us.
Right.
Like out on Plumbers Run Road, we're dual toned with Shinston on anything out there.
Right.
I mean, it is possible, it's just Gavin and. The nine one one center and whoever's in charge of Bridgeport EMS, I don't know if Pig's in charge of that or not.
I don't know.
So I know he's over day to day operations, but I don't know if he's in charge of that or not.
She's referring to isn't even Bridgeport, she's referring to Harrison County. She's referring to the trucks.
Bridgeport?
I know he's the Bridgeport OBS director.
Uh I don't know if he'd be part of that or not. But I know it's possible. Whether it can happen or not, I I can't answer that question.
I mean, we can try.
I'd say y'all need to be very careful. What you do. Because like where I live, Bridgeport, we pay a fire fee in Bridgeport, had no say in it. He lives a little bit more on Stone's Road from my house and his wife's EMTs, we've called the ambulances. Four times in the last three years since I've lived there, or maybe six, they're not dispatched. Because Bridgeport, we're, even though we're not in the Bridgeport city limits, we're considered. In the Bridgeport city limits, I don't know that, I don't know how their run law works.
When all that fire fee started, your dad, there's nothing, came to the Boozeville Fire Department and asked us to take over that area. I was chief at the time, I said, we don't have a problem with that, but you have to understand, we're a volunteer fire department. We don't have the same ISO rating, which is the insurance rating that your homeowner's insurance is based off of. I said, we're not staffed twenty four hours a day, I said, you could call nine one one, we might not make it, but Bridgeport's still gonna come because they're mutual aid with us. I said, and they took this all the way to Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court upheld it to where that was still Bridgeport's area, they had to pay the fire fee and all that. So it's a touchy situation with what she's wanting done. But like I said, we tried to take over the area where his dad's house and all them, out on seventy three right there. From basically from like the auction back towards the Taylor County line, they wanted us to be their first dude. Fire department, fun, but you have to understand what you're getting. And they were fine with that, so I said, fun. And I mean, the board of the fire department, board directors of the fire department and me and everything were in agreement with that, they sat down with all of us, we went over everything. But like I said, the Supreme Court upheld that as Bridgeport's. There was nothing I could do about.
That's the end of it, huh?
I don't know what the statute says that she gave you.
There it's just, I'm sure you cared, we're to provide adequate ambulance services.
We're already providing by that.
We're about it.
I know, that's, look. But it is, he's right, it is gonna be a touchy situation if you, depending on what you do do. And there's liability issues in there and everything else.
Alright, well, we'll move down the list here to grants.
And I have not been on any of those grants.
She's not here, so.
And I texted her just to make sure, and she said she has not been on it.
And we've got Judge Nines office next.
I have two two estimates that we've been waiting on, one is to do the painting, which will involve Judge Nines chambers. Um his secretary, they have a big storage pantry area and the law clerk area. To do the painting, which would involve moving all the furniture and everything, came in at six thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars. And then in that area, those areas also have the old um fluorescent bulbs, so we would like to change those to, we do flat panels, there's eighteen of those. And that came in at two thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars.
Who's it?
Um the painting uh will be done by R and R Services and the electric is Bollards Electric.
What do you think, gentlemen, you wanna give Mr. Judge Nines some new paint and some lighting?
So moved.
Second.
I probably moved and seconded to approve sixty four thirty seven for paint, R and R. And twenty eight sixty two for lighting, Bollards Electric. Move on down to. What's that?
General County.
I am responding, we have a consideration to them.
I do, actually, um for the four agencies, which is Boozeville, Flemington EMS, Flemington Volunteer Fire Department and Grafton. For a three year contract is two thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars.
What's that, what's that in Taylor, what's that consist of, what?
It's a service that, and maybe Michelle, you can even tell a little more about this, or even Boozeville.
Yeah, I have it right here on my.
Okay.
It's an app that gives us the capability of seeing the call and responding. We can click a button that says responding, it shows up on a TV screen at our station. So when we get there, we know who all is coming, we can wait for people, we know no one's coming, we can go ahead and go, it just streamlines our response time.
See, Taylor, we're already working on.
The stream.
Yep, yep, actually, there's a button here for mutually.
So realistically, I mean, we had that at Rescue Squad already, you get a call, you can find out who's going where.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, you guys had asked me to look over moving Taylor County, because Gavin said you guys never use.
Yeah, we don't use it, because we we're all paid. So and we don't have any volunteers coming in, we're all, who who's there is who we run against, so. I am responding, doesn't, we just don't have a volunteer, and we don't do the on-call anymore, we used to have on-call, but we don't have that anymore.
And I'll be clarified, just to make sure that you ever, two thousand seven hundred and fifty five annually for three years.
Have we already been part of that?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
This is just a renewal.
No, it's not here, it's just.
As a need to have your approval to renew.
I'm going to read the.
I'll second it.
It's for the volunteer fire department, this I am responding at. Twenty seven fifty five annually for three year contract. Do we have a motion to approve that?
I do, Tony second.
I second it.
Or move, Tony second, not a opposed, motion passes. Move on down to. W B Corp, two thousand twenty four proposal, this is our insurance renewal.
Correct, correct, that's your insurance renewal for the accounting of buildings. Vehicles, um total amount on there would be one hundred forty nine thou- one hundred forty nine thousand three hundred ninety seven dollars even.
That's also your, um I think your liability and one of the.
Correct.
All of you.
That's that covers a lot of.
It does.
A lot of things, I make a motion we approve.
Second.
To move to approve it, only seconded, not a opposed, motion passes to renew the the D Corp. Insurance. Plumber's Knob cellphone tower. There's a public notice that we got sent, we already have a cellphone tower at Plumber's Knob. They sent us a notice here that they're gonna do a modification. Tony, you're a designated. Reader, and there's maps and stuff on here, which I don't think you have to. Go over that, Plumber's Knob is located out in. Looks to be Meadland. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
I know.
Yes.
Did you say that?
Yes, it is.
You want to read this?
Lock yourself out, Tony.
Of course, there's too much to read here.
That's just that one.
Just the one. Oh, one paragraph?
Yeah, the rest of it's pictures.
Okay, to whom it may concern, and this is from a company called Edge, E D G E. Consulting engineers from Wisconsin. I'm writing on behalf of US Cellular Corporation and the Federal Communications Commission regarding a proposed wireless telecommunications. Colic- colac- colocation, whatever that word is, near the unincorporated community of Wendell, West Virginia. What the heck here? In order to provide new coverage slash enhanced coverage, US Cellular proposes to install additional telecommunications antennas upon the existing. Three hundred and sixty foot tower located at thirty four eighty two George Washington Highway near the unincorporated community of Wendell. In the Flemington District, Taylor County, West Virginia. US Cellular currently has existing antennas on this structure. Approximate coordinates of this tower, I'll give you a whole bunch of. Meets and bounds and all that, I have enclosed for your review documents that describe the location of this project. I guess to make a long story short, they're gonna add something to this tower, is that the way you?
Well, in my understanding, you guys already approved a while back, I think it was in January for the modification. This is stating that there could be a historic significance to what they're doing, I personally, I mean, it's really nothing around it. So I'm not sure, and it doesn't specify what that historic significance may be, other than maybe it's just landscape. I would never receive such a public notice, but I thought it was something that we should at least make more public by addressing it. And getting it, you know. On the agenda in case anybody has any concerns, and anyone's certainly free to look at the public notice.
Orville, is that the cellphone tower out by your house?
No, it's at Wendell Road.
Wendell Road.
Go on Wendell Road.
It looks like it hasn't, but it's got a route fifty address.
Yeah, George Washington, Wendell is from Gotham, past White Front or up to the next Meadland intersection.
Right.
That's all.
Tower, tower there somewhere.
It's overlooking the road.
I can't see, I mean.
I think it's right up there by by Meadland Farms, on the backside of Meadland Farms area.
I think it's Morrow Tower up there.
Uh.
Joe, you know where this is at, Plumbers?
If you drop off, the hill goes past Meadland Road, like you're heading toward Bridgeport.
Yeah.
The top of the hill before you drift off to where Porker Glass was, sits up where the top of the hill, the strip top.
Is that is that called Plumbers Plumbers Run into?
Plumbers.
Well, they they keep referring, if I understood your letter right, they refer to Wendell being the closest community.
Uh huh.
It I didn't think you said it was on Wendell Road.
No, it just says in Wendell, and it doesn't require we take any action, I just thought it would be good to get it out and get it on the agenda and make it known. It's just a public notice.
If anybody wants to view it, then it's.
It's available.
It's available for your viewing pleasure.
Uh so this is nothing that we've gotta buy or?
No.
And they're gonna pay us anything?
No.
We don't even have to.
Approve it, it's just simply FYI.
FYI.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Put the heat on in here, too.
Are you cold?
Do we have any, do we have any new hires, anybody, Jerry? Chris is gone. No new hires. Like the officials report.
Can we get mine out of the way first?
Looking like it is out of the way.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, so the first thing I have, I have a a grant application for um HAVA, which is Help American Voters Act. Um every year we have. To do extended service warranties, um firmware licenses and such on all of our voting machines. The total for that is sixteen thousand two hundred forty eight dollars and seventy five cents. Just for the voting machines that Taylor County has. Um. If we get this grant, this grant will cover that, but it requires the county commission to pledge a fifty percent match of that amount. So I'm asking if the county commission will will match that so we can apply for the grant to get that paid for.
I'll make a motion, we will, I don't see any way out of it.
We're gonna have a choice.
It's either pay half or pay it all.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve, motion passes.
And that amount, your guys' fifty percent match would be eight thousand one hundred twenty four dollars and thirty eight cents.
Sounds good.
The other thing I have is the clerk's office had one of our big scanners go down. Um these scanners scan in all our old books to get documents digitized and put online. Um I priced a new production class scanner to replace the big one that that went out, and also one individual scanner for smaller books. Um the mounts are on there, the big one is is quite pricey, and I I've looked around, but I was told. By every source that I got, that if I went with anything smaller scanning in all those old books, it would not hold up, so the mount should be down there on the bottom. And that's for both scanners installation and and the tech support on it through compile, which is who we use.
Six thousand eight hundred and forty eight dollars.
Yep, sounds right.
What do you think, gentlemen, a couple new scanners?
We can't turn it down.
You want, Tony, you could probably just write in those few books instead of scanning.
Do what?
Can you just let this drive it in there?
I don't think. I make a motion, we can buy that, we're gonna have it.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the two new scanner documents.
There has been no motions that's brought in anybody, it's all been going out.
Six thousand eight hundred forty eight fifty four for both scanners.
I wish I didn't have to buy scanners, that's the only way to get all that old stuff online for people, so.
What was the total of that?
Six thousand eight hundred forty eight dollars and fifty four cents.
It's like the little boy that's peeing the cash register, he says it soon runs into money.
Oh, my.
Don't put that in, don't put that in.
Oh, I'm gonna remember that one.
Is that your elected officials report?
Mike, you ready for mine?
Sure.
My first. Report is Sheltered Workshop, that's called New Horizons, by the way. Uh we are working to get it up and running. We're working with Preston County. They have a real active shelter workshop, and they have more work than they can do, so they're gonna work with us. Get some of that work over here so we can get this workshop up and running. I've been working on this particular project for the last four or five years. But I think I'm seeing it come to fruition now. Got a good board that operates it. And hopefully I can give you a better report next meeting. The next project that I'm on is the Senior Center. And they're doing very well. Uh they don't need any money right now, so anyhow. Uh. That project is going well. My other one is uh WVU Extension Service and John Murray has a fine job there, so. Uh. That's my report.
I did my report the last meeting, we do have the uh T D C M S uh meeting coming up the eleventh. Next Thursday, we this coming Thursday and uh nine one one meeting is fifteenth in the afternoon.
Sounds good. Uh only a couple things I have. We've had a few, oh, we have accidents all the time with uh county cars, but we don't really have a accident. Slash incident report form for for employees to fill out when these things happen, whether it's a worker's cop claim. Or a uh an accident with a, you know, county vehicle, dog catcher, deputy. whether it's a worker's comp claim or a, uh, an accident with a, you know, county vehicle, dog catcher, deputy, etc. So Patricia, uh, kind of got our heads together, and she came up with, uh, an accident slash incident report form for people to fill out as these occur, because a lot of times things get lost in the shuffle on claims and which car was involved, so that gives you a kind of a paper trail. We don't really have a designated person to give those to as well. Patricia has volunteered to be that person for the entire courthouse if any incident does happen when it comes to any type of insurance claim. Um, I'd like to nominate her for that position.
I accept the nomination.
That's gonna accept it.
I'll make a motion, we accept that form and we accept Patricia's, uh, volunteering to, uh, take care of that.
Thank you. And with that being said, tomorrow I'm going to email it out to all the elected officials in offices so they'll have that form and ask that they get that to me, hopefully within twenty-four hours, so I can get it into the system and start generating those claim numbers.
Good job.
Seconded to approve, motion passes.
That didn't require any money. Didn't bring in any either.
You don't need that, Patricia, you, that's for Jared. Okay, thank you. Uh, moving down to. Moving down to waivers and settlements.
Got two waivers.
May I say, interject something? I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sure you all have heard that beeping tonight. I'm, I'm thinking you've heard that beeping. It's the fiber panel in this building. We've had it repaired, we've changed the batteries, we've cleaned everything. It needs replaced. It is not only an agenda, however, it's an issue, it's something we need to address. I did get a price for three thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. I just need your approval to get it, to service, to get it placed and get it replaced.
Is that part of what system?
It's the fire system. So it acted up before, and what we did was we were shut it off during the day and then kick it back on the night in case there was a fire, and host, they changed the batteries and serviced it and did some updates, and it worked. But it's acting up now, and so yeah, we're in a couple minutes.
Who, who, who's the corpse on that?
I'm answering.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean.
Two thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. Could you hear that there?
Yes.
You say, you say three thousand four?
Three thousand four sixty-nine thirty-five.
From the fire alarm system?
It's just the panel. It's all posted, it's just that panel.
Who would pay that to?
Um, I think it's the alarm.
Oh.
They come, and they're the ones who install all of our, and they come in once a year and test our systems, and it just, it's not last.
Uh, did you do something about the alarm?
Um, I'm.
We have it.
I'll make a motion, we take care of the fire alarms.
Motion's been made, seconded to repair the fire alarm panels for three thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-five cents to advanced alarm.
Sure is way of a fire.
It still works and it still is responding.
Yeah. They are the first dude, aren't they?
Yeah, and it's still rich. Communicating with nine-one-one, it's just, it's telling me there's an error in the system when there's not. It's setting off when the.
Or with Bridgeport, yeah.
Wow, I think I.
No, they won't.
Yeah, that's true.
They're allowed.
It's annoying more than any, and it's, it's really, I don't know, it is, I'm surprised you guys can ask me.
I'll second.
Move to approve the waivers, Tony second, none are opposed, motion passes. And exonerations and consolidations.
I have three cement bars, that's a.
We have three exonerations. More money?
Hey, go, go back and say it.
Okay, come say it.
Go ahead.
I can see that Joe has a public concern.
I thought he did too, you know, I wanted to hear it from him.
There's a truck called Phyllis and she didn't need to stop for it.
This has been, uh, interesting meeting.
Switching where the legal school now to.
Legal's.
I'll make a motion.
Tony moved to approve, all are seconded, none are opposed, motion passes. Yeah, better you than me.
She's literally asked for the shot.
Do we have any, do we have any public concerns?
Does anybody wanna speak up or?
Make a statement or?
Give us hell, whatever. Uh, Patricia, you wanna talk about this ribbon cutting for tomorrow?
Sure, um, a couple years ago, the E D A had some property it owns out by Porco, which we put and advertised and it was sold last year to Cornerstone Drilling. And out of that time, they have built a new facility, and tomorrow they are having a ribbon cutting. It is going to be held on site, um, from four to six, thank you, Nikki, and certainly the commission, the E D A and the public's all invited.
And who's this Taylor County Young Life?
They, they built a second building, which is Young Life, which is a Christian-based organization that they work with students to just try and help them find a Christian lifestyle. It is a little place to go. It's like a little youth center.
Part of the ribbon day also.
Yes, the one I wrote about.
Is there gonna be any foods there?
You know, I don't know, but I'm thinking there's probably conscious baking, finger foods.
Probably cheese crumbs.
Probably.
Tony, you take some cookies and they'll be there.
Yeah. So.
All right, I think that's.
Yeah, they were located.
By the way, this is a woman-owned company.
Yeah, it is, and they were, um, in, located in Harrison County, and she's originally in Taylor, and so is her husband. So they, um, wanted to relocate to Taylor County.
And they drill under highway, that's their main job. Anything else? Anybody else wanna say anything or?
I have something.
Hey, go ahead.
I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Chrissy Michael with First Energy. And I'm your new external affairs consultant. We might have dealt with Libby Durver in the past, I don't know if that name rings a bell. But I just wanted to come and meet everyone and share my information with you. So I deal a lot with like the, um, emergency management center. And I would be the person who provides you with storm estate, power outages. And if someone brings something to your desk that, um, would circle back to First Energy and you have questions or you need to try to truck down someone in our company, I am your first.
Does Sean have your contact information or? Only in person?
Sean would have my information. Um, I'm trying to think if I've actually spoken, um, I don't know if I've spoken to him directly, but I did send out communication to all my, like, the management directors, all my counties, yes.
After hearing.
Yeah.
Everything that went on this meeting, you have any suggestions or comments or?
I'm just glad no one brought any concerns up about First Energy at all, so.
We'll get that on the message, Joe.
Thank you for coming.
Listen, Dee, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
You're welcome, anytime, just keep. They can give us some advice.
We'll move on down, gentlemen. Would we like to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion, we pay the darn bills.
The motions been made and seconded, none are opposed, motion passes to pay the bills. Hey, Patricia.
I don't have it.
That's okay.
I'm sorry, I'll do better next. I'm not used to my new bills.
I forgot you're not out there.
You're gonna have to just, um, go do the old my voice.
Chrissy did, they're. I got the name of Riggleman that was associated with our company.
Dale Riggleman?
Dave Riggleman.
Dave Riggleman.
This is yours.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, I meant to do that.
Hey, we're one. On this one right here, this is Joe Goller's cruiser just got repaired, two from the seller's body shop. Uh, the insurance thing has not been paid yet.
But the guy paid the bill.
Work's been done. They had the cruiser back, they released the cruiser to him last week. So Patricia said, we could go in and pay them and get reimbursed when it comes.
And that's to figure out where your brown rice was though?
No.
And that's partly why we generated that form, so we can try.
Right, that's, that's, that's the reason. Thank you, Chrissy.
Thank you, I will. Nice to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.